Is it on? Are we ready to go? Is it 5:30?
And if you could elevate those other two, Avery.
Okay. I'm going to start. Good evening. I'm Kelly Madden and as the Chair of the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Commission, I'm calling this meeting to order. It's Monday, January 9th, 2023, and the time is 5:30 PM. And I will call this special meeting to order now. The first thing I'll do is take a roll call. Is Commissioner Stemmich here?
Present.
Thank you. Is Commissioner Hoarding Jones here?
Here.
Is Commissioner Schmidling here?
Here.
Oh, how I wish you were here, right here, all of you. Commissioner Ellingson, are you here?
I'm here.
All right. Commissioner Leckie, are you here? She's here, isn't she?
She's muted.
Okay. And of course, me. I am here. Should I wait? I'll just keep going on because we know she's here. And joining us tonight also will be Tanya Salzman, who is a Senior Planner for Deschutes County, and also present is Peter Katuski, who's the Community Development Director for Deschutes County. And now I will follow our agenda. The first thing that we are going to need to do is an election of officers. And at this time, I think we should start with the, do you start with the Vice Chair or the Chair? What would you suggest? The Vice Chair?
Sure.
Okay, I will begin with the Vice Chair, and if that is not amenable to the rest of you, please let me know. So I will start with nominations for Vice Chair. Currently, the Vice Chair is Commissioner Leckie. Is there anyone here who would like to put forth a nomination for Vice Chair for the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Commission?
Did anybody address an interest before the meeting tonight, or did we have a nominating committee, Kelly?
No, we did not, Commissioner Leckie, but we are secretly hoping in our heart that you might continue to do it because we adore you so much. But if you don't want to, we understand.
No, I would just like to transfer the leadership opportunity. It's not that I don't want to do it. I believe leaders need to change, so whatever works out.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to nominate someone else as Vice Chair? Going once, going twice. I would like to nominate Commissioner Leckie as Vice Chair. Is there anyone that would second the motion?
I'll second Dennis Schmidling.
Do we need another one, or is that enough?
No.
That's it. Okay, so confirmed. Congratulations. Commissioner Leckie, you are the Vice Chair.
Thank you.
All right.
Darn, you wanted more debate.
I know. I don't think the folks in Zoom land are very debatey right now, and that's okay. So now we'll move on to the next order of business, which would be the election of the Chair of the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Commission. And I would like to nominate myself, just because I'm very proud of the work that we've done, getting the Policies and Procedures Manual together, and also the Strategic Plan. But if you guys don't think I'm doing a good job, then now's your chance to nominate someone else.
Sing, I'll make a motion to nominate Kelly as the Chair again.
I'll second it.
So done. I am now the Chair. Thanks, guys. I'm excited. I promise next time we're together, I will make some good baked treats. Next order of business will be the approval of minutes from July 11th and August 1st. At this moment, I would like to turn it over to Tanya Salzman, who's the Senior Planner for Deschutes County, so she can explain the minutes.
I have some explaining to do. Hi, this is Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner. Just a quick note that Brooke Clark sent out the July 11th minutes, I believe, this morning. The August 1st are gonna, they're still on hold, so we're just looking at one set of minutes now. And we will, our goal is to get caught up by the next meeting. We promise. Thank you for your patience. There's been a lot of shuffling, so.
So the question I have for the Commissioners, I personally did not see the minutes until I got here, and Commissioner Elling, this is Commissioner Madden. Commissioner Ellingson had them, and we perused them together. And I don't know if you fellow Commissioners have had a chance to peruse them. And if you have, then we can go forward and approve the minutes. But if you have not had a chance to do that, we can put that off until we get the next set at the next meeting, which is February 6th. So I will ask each one of you if you would rather do it now or later. Commissioner Stemmich?
Yes, I did review them. My recollection of what we discussed six months ago is pretty shady, but it looks, it looks appropriate to me.
Okay, so I think with that and with Commissioner Ellingson, right now I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of July 11th, to, no, 2022.
I so moved to approve the minutes from July 11th, 2022.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, in unison. That's a triple. Okay, the minutes from July 11th are approved. And now we will need the ones from August 1st, and then I guess the ones from this meeting as well.
And November.
And November. Perfect. So we'll get August 1st, November, and January at the next meeting, which is February 6th. Commissioners, are there any questions about that?
Is there anything we need to do to be helping get them in a more timely fashion?
I posed that question earlier before the meeting began, Commissioner Leckie, and I think that, I think that we're going to get it together. And I hope. And here's Commissioner Salzman.
It was just a resource issue with our kind of administrative department. There was maternity leave involved, and our goal is to get everything caught up. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Wanted to see if you needed help. All right, thank you.
Anya, was the November 2nd, was that the one with the technical difficulties where part of the presentation was cut out?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay. That one's going to be a little challenging.
Well, I think the recording is actually okay, because our admin, she does it from the recordings, so it should be okay. We'll see.
Yeah, okay.
What patience, what patience. All right. Are there any other comments about the minutes before we move on? Okay, next action, next agenda item is number four, which is public comment. And I don't know, Avery, who is our wonderful tech genius, is there anybody joining us from the public?
Uh, no.
Okay. Is there any public in the room that would like to say anything? There are just us here tonight. Okay, then that agenda item is completed. At this point, we are on action item number five, which is the Deschutes County 2040 upcoming open house debriefing with Nicole Mardell, the Senior Planner from Deschutes County. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. And I just wanted to double check. Can folks on Zoom hear me? I know this microphone sometimes is a little wacky. So give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. It looks good. Great. Okay, so thank you for having me here today. So again, my name is Nicole Mardell. I'm a Senior Planner with Deschutes County Long Range Planning. And today is a continuation of your November meeting when we ran into some of those technical issues. So really, I'm here to kind of redo that activity that a couple of us participated in, in hopes that those who are participating virtually have a chance to give your feedback. So just to summarize, I will have just a very brief presentation to share. But during the last meeting, we went over this PowerPoint, and then we participated in an activity. We'll have a chance to go through that, but then we'll also dig into some of our policy edits. So that will be new to this meeting, and we'll all go through together. So just wanted to double check. Can everyone see my PowerPoint here? Okay, so a comprehensive plan.
We can't see it up here.
We can't see it unless we turn around, and we can't see the other people either.
Yeah, and we also can't see the other Zoom people.
Okay, well, maybe give.
Oh, I can see it.
You can, Chris?
I can.
Could you see us?
I can see it as well.
Do you want to describe it, Dennis? You're an artist.
With legal requirements, community input, and data analysis on the left. Want me to go on?
No, you're good. Thank you.
Well, the images aren't that necessary, and you've seen this PowerPoint before, so I'll just kind of continue and maybe provide more verbal explanation than I would otherwise. So just to frame the conversation this evening, this is a discussion about the Deschutes County 2040 Project, which is our Comprehensive Plan Update Project. A comprehensive plan is the county's guiding framework. It's an aspirational policy document for growth and physical development in the rural county. So this is our plan that covers all the topics from housing to recreation, community engagement, farmland, et cetera, and really sets the tone for things like zoning code amendments, grant programs. Some of the criteria can be used in Plan Amendment Zone Change applications, things like environmental regulations. And the plan is based off of some legal requirements from the state, but it's also based off of community input. Where do residents want the county to go in the future? So the plan covers a 20-year horizon, so that's why we call it Deschutes County 2040. And the last time we updated the plan was 2010. So it has been about 10 years since we last revisited this document in a holistic manner. So in terms of our project timeline, we kicked off this project in May and did some background research with our consultants, kind of set the stage for the project. This fall and into this winter, we've been conducting our first round of community outreach. So that's really on kind of the key issues, challenges, and opportunities facing the county, kind of the bigger picture in terms of what changes do residents want to see. And during that time, we've held open houses in person, online, and we've held these meetings in a box meetings, which is essentially what we're doing this evening, where we bring the meeting to a group. During this time, we've met with about 575 people. So we've gotten already quite a few great ideas on what the key issues are in the county. And this engagement will continue throughout the duration of the project. So right now, we're entering into our next phase, which is taking this input and crafting policy from it. This later spring, early summer, we'll put the whole document together, and we hope to start the public hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of Accounting Commissioners in fall of 2023, early 2024. So we're still collecting quite a bit of input, but we are entering into kind of the more specific part of our project.
Excuse me, Nicole. The, on your website, it says that this Phase 3 is the review of draft goals and policies. Is there somewhere the public can see these drafts?
Yeah, great question. I will say we're a little bit delayed in our process, so we're just now starting to edit our goals and policies. But the Planning Commission has conducted their initial review of our existing comprehensive plan policies and changes made by staff, things like deleting policies that are duplicative, et cetera. So we do have those materials under our Meetings page. We can, I think we will, post them to our project website, so they're a bit easier to access. So I think we'll plan on doing that later this week, if you'd like to take a look at all of the policies.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and tonight we'll look specifically at the Historic Cultural Resource Policies. So this is a map that our in-person participants can't see, but I'm sure you're probably pretty familiar with the kind of goal of this map. Really, I wanted to just note that the county is about 3,000 or so square miles, but Deschutes County really only has planning jurisdiction over about 21% of it. So just want to set expectations that we do have quite a bit of federal land in the county. Of course, we have property and city limits, and our plan does not cover those areas. Rather, we partner with those agencies, try to have a cohesive relationship. But really, there's a pretty limited area in which this plan will apply. So I wanted to note some of the key issues, goals, and challenges that have been noted thus far in the process by community members. There's concern from community members about planning for growth, especially on the fringe of our cities. Lots of concern about farm and forestry resources and economic impacts. That's two sides of the issue. Got the PowerPoint up. That looks great. So on one hand, we're hearing concern from folks about farmland being lost, being rezoned. On the other side, we're hearing from other community members that there's a need for additional income for farmers. So things like agritourism opportunities and more flexibility with the requirements in that respect. We've heard concern about water availability and supply, concern about wildfire and other natural hazards, concern about recreation and tourism and potential overuse of natural resources, and concern about transportation and getting people around most efficiently as the county grows. So this gets into our exercise. So this evening, really, we're asking essentially two questions. What are the key issues, challenges, and opportunities facing the county over the next 20 years, and what changes do you hope to see? So I wanted to summarize what we heard at the last meeting. So during the last meeting, we heard from our in-person participants that one of the key issues facing the county is water. That relates to beneficial use of water, piping projects, the need for education about water law, potentially changes at the state level. Wildfire, that's a key topic that will arise and has already come up quite a bit. Zoning, the need for potentially a new designation for EFU land with bad soil, so maybe something in between farmland and like a residential zone. We heard concern about meeting space for community engagement, that there's not a lot of available rooms for groups in Bend or Redmond. So desire for those kind of what we call third spaces, and bus service, the need for potentially rural services, things like service on Alfalfa Market Road. So with that, I wanted to turn it over to the group, in particular, our virtual attendees this evening, of, you know, what key issues are arising for you, what changes do you hope to see for the future of Deschutes County? And we'll record this information and again, bring it into our policy review. So with that, maybe I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
No, you're good. Go ahead. I've already, I've done all this already. So you can, you can go ahead and lead it, because if you want to. I mean, if you really want me to, I will, but I just don't know if this is a great use of my time, because I've already done this.
Absolutely. Okay, well, maybe I could call on one of our other Commissioners. So Commissioner Stemmich, would you mind?
And I also am wondering, should people volunteer to help, or I just don't know about people being called out and put on the spot when they didn't really know that this is what was going to be happening.
Absolutely. Yeah, I defer to you. Maybe we'll just take volunteers for now.
Perfect for, just to see what happens. Do any of you guys have any issues that you wrote down or thought about that are important to you? Just let us know.
Yeah, this is Rachel.
Hey.
Is the, I'm not sure this is tied back. There was a recent survey that I believe was, was sent out. I can't remember what the closing date was on it. Is that related to this, Nicole?
Yeah, absolutely. We had an online survey that was open from mid-October, and it ended in mid-November. So it's possible that you took that survey.
I believe I did. Yeah. I like, I definitely like the idea of a, of a, kind of an interstitial zoning option between EFU and quasi-residential. It sounds like you mentioned it's something that somehow is connected to soils for actual farmland. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so in our, I guess I'll note it in kind of our broader outreach. We've heard a few different iterations of this. There's a, generally, there's a recognition that Deschutes County, a lot of the property that's zoned EFU, either it doesn't have water rights, it has rocky soils, for instance, so it's just not able to be farmed. So there's kind of a desire in a few different ways of a zone that could maybe allow residential development while still having a larger acreage to prevent parcelization. There's another kind of concept of something like a high desert zone, that's a little bit more stewardship focused or open space focused. But yes, ultimately, it's about potentially looking at the soil quality as an eligibility factor for, for a new zone.
Interesting. Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. I think it could be carried out pretty well with, with the right definitions and restrictions between, that differentiate between that and EFU land. I think one of the other, I don't know which category it would fit into, has any discussion come up on, I guess it might be community, but emergency services within rural county? I don't know where that would actually fit. I mean, I guess I'm more looking at it from, you know, fire hazards and things like that. Public safety, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Fire District Number 2 does cover the rural areas, but there must be some limit to it. I know they don't cover the people that live off the grid out by Horse Ridge. I know that. So there must be some boundary to it, but they cover an awful lot.
Absolutely. Yeah, great, great item to note. I can take a look after this meeting. I'm not totally familiar of any gaps in our rural service districts, but.
I don't know if there are. It's just, I don't know. I mean, the idea came to me just looking at our map of the county and realizing how, how far out some particular, you know, homesteads are of sorts.
Nicole, I had a question about the getting around. If I understand, there's a separate transportation plan that's being developed? And so in fact, this comprehensive plan is just going to allude to that plan? Is that the idea?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we do have another project, our Transportation System Plan, often referred to as a TSP. And that's essentially a chapter of our Comprehensive Plan. So the road department typically leads that process, so they're leading that right now. They're, they have draft projects lists available for comment. I believe there was a survey that closed just at the start of the new year. So that, that is being handled by the road department, but we're still drafting some of the policies and goals for that plan. So our intent is to use feedback that we're getting through this process and share it with the road department, so that input can be incorporated in that plan.
And what other commissions are going through this process, too?
Which other commissions are we?
Yeah, for the county.
Yeah, so we've, we've met with the Planning Commission, but we've met with about 50 other groups for this particular meeting. Primarily, that's things like.
Wait, I'm confused. With this particular meeting that we're having this moment?
This, this is what we're calling our meeting in a box, this engagement.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand that. Okay.
Yeah, so this particular, yeah, so it's one of our engagement tools. It's called a meeting in a box. We bring the meeting to a group rather than have them come to one of our open houses. So I guess I want to make sure I'm understanding your question, but for this particular engagement tool, we've met with a variety of groups, about 50 groups, everything from nonprofits to state agencies, et cetera, to get input. Was that answering your question?
Yeah, I just didn't know. I, I guess the, what I had missed in all of this is the bigger picture with that. I didn't know that you'd gone to other commissions. I didn't know who was participating in this. I didn't know how long this discussion was going to be. I didn't know that we were people that were going to be invested and needed to discuss this. And so that's the part that I have been missing, because I didn't really understand how it all fit together. I didn't know who those 50 groups were and how it all fits together for the county.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll just note that we're, we're trying to do two things. We're trying to raise awareness of this project, and we're trying to gather input. So as I mentioned, early in the presentation, we conducted kind of our first round of engagement this fall. That's continued through this winter. So the groups that we've met with are things, are groups like, you know, Backcountry Hunters and Anglers Association, Neighbor Impact, you know, our county departments that relate to, you know, homelessness, unhoused, community services, things like that. And I'm happy to provide.
No, I was just nervous, because I thought we were the only ones doing this, and I thought the whole 2040 thing is going to be on our backs, and I just didn't get that. Thank you very much for explaining that.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we're here just because you're, you know, of course, one of our involvement committees, and you have, you know, great perspectives, in particular around your area of expertise. So that's.
Thank you.
Nicole, this is Sharon. Is there anywhere in the plan, anything about preserving our, the integrity of our community and the history, and making sure that we don't lose that in future development? I don't mean, you know, don't tear down a building, but it just seems like coming from the Landmarks Commission, we ought to have some kind of a comment about, you know, that. I'm not sure what the wording would be, but.
Yeah, so this seems like a good time, and I apologize, I know the text is so small here, but this seems like maybe a good time to bring up this item, which is our current cultural and historic resource policies and the comprehensive plan, CLC on the left-hand side, the language. Anything that's strike through or underline has been added by staff during this process. So this is kind of our first round of, from a staff perspective, what do we think needs updating? And then on the right-hand side, you'll see notes and discussion. So in particular, you know, we have this overarching goal of promoting preservation, but I'm not sure if we have anything in particular about preserving integrity of history and community.
Would it be appropriate to reference our strategic plan here?
Yes, absolutely. So in the second policy here under Item D, there's a note that says, "Support the goals, objectives, actions of the Historic Preservation Strategic Plans." That was one that was added by staff.
Thank you.
And as a former English teacher, I just want to say notes and discussion. When someone wrote in the top box there, "Added an Oxford comma." I'm like, very pleased. Did you do that?
No, I think that was added by our consultant.
Oh. Commissioner Leckie, were you sort of talking about what the flavor of Bend is? Is that what you meant by preserving the integrity and history?
Good question. It's all those things. I just, you know, I mean, to me, grow. Good question. It's all those things. I just, you know, I mean, to me, growth, you know, it's a two-sided sword and everything, you know, whether it's fires or whatever, it impacts that, that history.
Well, I think about that when I moved here 25 years ago, and the big thing was the bend sign out of Greenery on the parkway at both ends. And I don't even know if people look at that anymore. So, there you go.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So I'll, maybe I'll kind of prompt the group. So looking for feedback on two items. The first is, you know, if, if any commissioners haven't spoken yet, just any kind of ideas or thoughts about key issues, challenges, opportunities facing the county over the next 20 years? Or if you had any comments about these draft edits to our current policy language. I did want to point out a new policy that's under 12.1.3 at the bottom of the page, and this relates to coordination with tribal governments. So in working with Tanya, we tried to craft this language based on some of the discussion that occurred during your strategic planning process. But that one in particular, since it's new, would be really helpful to, to get your feedback on.
I'm really pleased to see that. That policy on there.
I wonder about the term coordinate with Native American tribes. I don't, does that need to be any more specific or anything? I don't know. Maybe that wording has been worked on a lot, so I'll just leave that be.
Yeah. And Kelly, I've seen it that way a lot.
You have?
Everybody, everybody's adding this to their website, to their emails, everything. So yeah, this is kind of common language.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good point.
I'm not sure I understand the end of that sentence. Prevent conflicting uses from disrupting the scientific value of known sites. As opposed to the cultural values?
That's a great question. Yeah, I think we were kind of focused maybe on, on the potentially like the research value of those sites, but I, I think you're right. It doesn't have to necessarily be one or the other, so maybe we should add cultural value as well.
Or just value. You could take it out and just make it easier.
Well, if you don't put something in there, people might think it's monetary value.
Oh, you're right. Cultural value, maybe. I've never heard the term "scientific value."
Yeah, great point. I'll have to revisit our notes and, yeah, it seems like, again, as we present these, if something's confusing, then that means our language isn't clear enough. So I think that's a great point, that we should retool that a bit.
Kelly?
Yes, ma'am.
Scientific value is common usage in the archaeology world.
Okay. Can you explain, Commissioner Hoarding Jones, very briefly, if you want to, what that means?
Well, that means if we're doing an excavation, a test excavation, and you're, it's a controlled excavation, right? You're, you're going down slowly, keeping things in order as to their three-dimensional place in the dig, and you're pulling that data, which is scientific and can be used for scientific analysis later on. So I'll give you an example. A projectile point that's found, let's say, 15 centimeters below the ground, most likely is older than a projectile point found seven meters, seven centimeters below the ground surface. That's scientific value.
I wish you could have been my science teacher. Thank you, Commissioner Hoarding Jones. That was very well explained. So do you think we should keep then scientific and cultural value?
I think, yeah, that's a very good point, to put in the cultural value, because the tribes look at cultural value more than they do the scientific value.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add?
Excellent. Well, I, I think that's a, yeah, I think we've gotten some great feedback this evening. Of course, if anything comes to you after this meeting, you can always email me. But I just want to note kind of what's next in this process. So as you've heard, we held our first round, kind of more big-picture engagement this past fall. This spring, we'll be holding open houses on our policy approaches to the issues that have come up during this process, issues, opportunities, and challenges. So we'll be having both virtual and in-person options as our commission contacts. We hope that you can spread the, spread the word of this project with your peers or your networks to help get the word out about this project and, of course, visiting our website. So to be notified of upcoming open houses or any other new materials, for instance, those policies that'll be posted on the website, you can sign up for our mailing list, and that's all on our website, which is deschutes.org/2040. So again, we'll use the feedback from this evening and all of our other outreach events to craft that policy language, and that's what those open houses will cover of, did we hit the mark? Is there more work needed on these goals and policies for the entire comprehensive plan? So with that, that's all I have for you this evening. Appreciate your time and allowing me to, to join your meeting. And my email's here again, if anything comes to you after the meeting, or if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Nicole, for explaining that, because I didn't understand what we were doing. And you did a very good job. Thank you. Any other comments from any other commissioners? Look, it's the first time we can see them on the Zoom. All right. Anybody else? All right. We're still on Agenda Item Number Five, Action Item 5.2. We are going to be talking about the CLG grant, correct? Is that the next thing that we're doing? With Tanya.
Yes.
And here she comes. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner. I am here tonight. It's CLG grant time, so it's that time of year again. And in your memorandum, I threw a lot of information at you, verbatim, from the commissioners that provided suggestions, and I just kind of wanted to get it all out there. And then today, I'm going to go over the, provide an overview of the CLG grant for those who are not familiar with it. Maybe there's somebody watching at home who's not gone through this. So we want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. And then I will share, rather than go through every single item, I'm going to share the feedback that I've since received from the State Office of Historic Preservation, which happened after I uploaded this memo. So we're going to just kind of discuss it. I, I made my first pass at kind of corralling things into groups that what's less feasible, what's more feasible, and then we'll kind of go from there to try to whittle things down or discuss. It should be pretty informal. If anyone has any thoughts at any point, just yell them out. I think right now, like, the purpose of, of this meeting is to kind of get our first pass of, of a list of potential projects, and then we can kind of marinate it over those over the next couple of weeks with the goal of having a little bit more of a finessed list by our next meeting on February 6th. So it can be a little bit loose today in terms of what we're thinking about. We don't have dollar amounts or anything like that yet. We're just kind of looking for good ideas. I'm going to share my screen.
Am I supposed to? Oh, okay.
No, no, it's, it's, it always takes a little delay. So it's a, it's not as formal as it looks. Unless you want it to be, it can be.
Bless you.
I'm just, sorry, reorganizing my windows here. Bear with me for a moment. Okay. So just a brief overview on what the CLG grant is. CLG stands for Certified Local Governments. They are non-competitive grants, meaning that pretty much everybody gets a grant unless you have not really followed the instructions properly. It's funded via the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office, and that's actually funneled through the National Park Service. So ultimately, it's federal money, and it gets relayed through the state and then to us and other certified local governments. These funds are available for projects that promote historic preservation, documentation, designation, rehab, planning, review, and compliance, and public education. And I'll go into these a little bit more later. The application deadline is February 24th, and we'll hear back from Chippewa in April, usually the beginning of April. The grant amount this year is a little bit more than last year. It's between $13.5 and $15,000. They don't guarantee, if you ask for $15,000, that you're going to get it, but we will shoot for something within that range. Last year, I forget the exact amount, but at the end, because there was a smaller number of applicants, they actually bumped up our award by either $1,500 or $2,000. So you never quite know exactly where it's going to land, so that's why it's good to have backup projects. So, and we have to provide, as the county has to provide, a one-to-one match. Usually, we do that as staff time, in-kind type of time and resources. And usually, the grant's about 17 months long, depending on when those initial agreements get signed. So they usually end in August of the following year. So I'm going to jump right into some project ideas. Well, first, I'm going to talk about eligibility, and this comes directly from the grant verbiage. Surveys are eligible, the documentation of properties and archaeological sites. Designation, so designating a historic property or archaeological site to the local landmarks list or the National Register. Pre-development, which is preservation plans, structural reports, designs for historic properties. Development, which is rehab of properties that are listed on the National Register. And I will say, we don't do a ton of that kind of work in, in Deschutes County's HLC work, just because of the nature of the historic properties, but you never know, and so everything's always on the table. Planning, which is community preservation plans, archaeology studies, and that type of thing. Review and compliance, this has been a big thing for us. Management of CLG's preservation program, being processing design review applications. We get one or two of those every once in a while. Design guidelines, et cetera. That is where our, last year, our last grant cycle, our strategic planning project, that kind of fell under review and compliance, as well as our, our Policies and Procedures Manual. Public education, this is a biggie. Preservation Month activities, speakers, trainings, walking tours, all of that good stuff. Except for signs, interpretive panels. Those are not eligible for, for CLG grant funding. Kind of the rest of what we've done has often fallen into that public education bucket. Yeah. And then other activities, trainings, membership in organizations, training materials. They noted that the National Alliance of Preservation Commission's membership and trainings are highly recommended, so that's something to think about. Last year, as a brief refresher, we had a lot of projects with sisters. They engaged a consultant to create a story map about the historic properties. We also bought some audio equipment for the Three Sisters Historical Society, and then there were some, they printed their historic walking tour brochures. Those were kind of the, the things that the actual check paid for, and then the rest was staff time for the strategic plan and the policies and procedures, and just kind of general administration. And I think that worked out pretty well. So, project suggestions. I made a call to all the commission to share ideas, and, and some of you did. Thank you very much for that. City of Sisters also threw eight additional projects into the hopper. Both of those are all, both sets of those projects are listed in your memo. I'm not going to go into great, great detail. We can absolutely discuss any of them. I just don't want to read the whole memo to you. And most importantly, so staff recently shared with Chippewa all of these ideas for the first pass on feedback. Is this eligible? Is this, is this not eligible? Excuse me. Do we think this is feasible? Just kind of general feedback, because ultimately, they are the arbiters of what is eligible for the grant, how we report it. So they, what they say goes. So we, we appreciate their expertise and we listen to them, because they're the ones who are funding this grant. So I've provided background and sometimes exact quotes from what they said about some of these projects that helped kind of categorize these. So, well, you'll see on the next slides are those categories and some comments from Chippewa. So as a way to start
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome. As a way to start kind of narrowing things down. So first, ineligible projects, and I'm sorry to be a downer. That doesn't mean they're not doable. They're just not doable through the CLG grant. So, create a historic coalition of Central Oregon. They thought this was a fabulous idea, just not for the CLG grant. This was item number one, I believe, in, in the memo. It had multiple parts. They did note a bunch of other grants. They said to look into becoming a heritage all-star community, and I admittedly don't know that much about that yet. Bend is one, but counties can apply to do it. There's other grants. They mentioned to consider hiring someone to develop goals, structure, and strategies if we did want to pursue this. And I can certainly follow up with them on, on additional ideas and potential funding sources, but that, for the purposes of this conversation, Chippewa recommended kind of tabling it a little bit.
This one is important, though, because our, when we do have all these different organizations, whether they're nonprofits or, you know, jurisdictional, when we do, you know, organization for Preservation Month, or we have an activity that, and this, I'm, I'm speaking from example, a few years back, we did, actually, this probably happened a couple of times, where we did a historic bike tour. And we actually were, we didn't have any sort of like liability waivers or insurance or anything, because there's nobody to, you know, it was just, it was just an effort combined by individuals such as myself. And so it ended up kind of being in this sort of gray area as far as, you know, if anyone was injured on the bike ride, that kind of thing. So I, this, this has always been kind of a concern, I think, going forward, or at least a hesitancy. If we do engage in, in different types of Preservation Month activities, for example, how, how do we address that portion of it for liability and things like that? So, and it had never really even occurred to me until somebody asked, and then I realized how serious that that could be. So I don't know if coalition is appropriate, but I don't know if, yeah, not forming another nonprofit would do it either. But that, that has been, it has been an issue or a concern in the past. Maybe that's a side note.
I think that's why we didn't do it anymore.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
One of the reasons, because I, it kind of spooked me a little bit.
I don't know the answer to this, but I can check into it. The Historical Society does walking tours. They do a, a tour for around Halloween to do scary things about historical places. So I don't know what kind of liability insurance they have to cover that. I can check and see.
Yeah, it would be worth it to, to see what other organizations have available for that.
This is Sharon. The solution is you just find a physical sponsor, which is a legal entity, whether it's Deschutes Historical Society or the Environmental Center, and they, you know, they, they take on the project because they have the insurance.
That's interesting.
So this isn't eligible for a grant, but it perhaps could still be pursued as a grassroots kind of effort?
Yeah, I can, you know, there were, according to Chippewa, there's, there could be funding available from other sources. Becoming this heritage all-star community, I guess, opens up some doors to be able to do that. She also provided a couple of other ideas, and I think we could definitely reach out to Chippewa to get kind of more specifics. She mentioned that, I guess, some groups in the Willamette Valley have pursued such a thing, and, you know, it's, she noted it's a challenge, just because it's, as any organization, kind of making the structure and the rules and all of that, you have to establish all that groundwork stuff first, but that it could be really helpful. It's just, it's, it's definitely a task, but it's, it's, it could be really helpful, I think, especially in a kind of spread-out area like we are. So that would be something that, to pursue separate from this grant, but something that maybe we could have a subcommittee or something like that in the future, for sure. And I can forward that, that additional information to the group. That's helpful.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
I have one more question, I think, for Tanya. On, on the end of that description, for the On the end of that description for the coalition, it says, "Consider hiring someone to develop goals." Who would be, like, what are we thinking about hiring? Would it be additional county staff?
I believe, and I'd have to clarify this with the state, but I think that they were talking about some sort of consultant, some sort of outside party, whether that's a historic preservation, or maybe organizational, someone who can set things up. That was my impression.
And that is correct.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to just move on. And so this door is not closed, it's just not open for this particular process, but I think it's a, it's a great idea. Continuing on the ineligible projects, just to get it out of the way, there was an idea to help the Historical Museum with Oral History Collection publish its book, help with small upgrades to museum. They noted that book publishing is not eligible. Building upgrades, maybe, because it is listed on the histor, the national resource, it's a national resource, excuse me. As for the signs in the county and an interpretive kiosk in the county, as noted before, those things are not eligible. And I'm kind of pulling from all of the suggestions, so it's a little bit out of order, but I just wanted to kind of put that in category, so apologies if it's a little bit confusing.
Just for clarification, this is Sharon. You know, something like an interpretive kiosk, are they talking physical, or are we talking also digital?
I believe it's both.
It's all, isn't it? Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to add that, thank you.
That was one of Sharon's ideas, correct?
I believe it was, yeah. And I'm not, I don't know what the reasoning is, why, why these things are not eligible.
Because there's other funding sources for that.
I guess, yeah, that's a good point.
Well, if it's digital, that makes me wonder about the Sisters' effort to put their interactive map, for example.
I think that's different, because that's on a website, it's not in a physical thing. You know, a kiosk would be like a little podium guy, I think, and I, again, I think, yeah, that's my impression.
Not, Sharon, final clarification. I'm working on all kinds of modernizations for historical societies all over Oregon, and the term interpretive kiosk applies to digital and/or the traditional type.
Okay.
So just be careful, everybody.
Thank you, that's helpful.
No, no worries. Only now because I'm doing it.
Okay. So projects, just some caveats, a little bit, just some notes from some SHPO. There was a general, larger item to update county landmarks, and I'll kind of drill down into that. In general, she noted that the condition report, condition assessment of designated properties could potentially be funded, but when you go down into the repair and the maintenance issues, there's issues with private properties. A lot of these are on private property, and they were saying that, you know, private property owners might not be thrilled about the idea of the county coming in to do work on these. And similarly, from a facility standpoint, they're just, it's probably a no-go to engage a county department, even if there's funding available for that, to have them do the work for the Historic Preservation, Historic Landmarks Commission. With that, they do say that a conditions assessment, so that first step, in figuring out what, what has the problems, you know, what's in what shape, that's a potential.
Excuse me.
Yeah, of course.
Have we, has anyone asked us to do that? Like, you know, a historic barn down in the South County or something?
Not to my, I mean, to look at it and say, hey, what, what should we do? Or can you help us do it? Or both?
Any of them. I'm just curious, I haven't seen any inquiries here.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, they've certainly not come their way to me or to our planning department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We really have very little outreach, or very little dialogue with historic property owners, unless there's suddenly an application to modify or demolish or things like that. Generally, it's only when it hits that level. But that will bring me to another item that's possible. Thank you for that transition. Oh, well, first, let's continue on this category. So the idea to teach and engage youth, some activity that we take to the schools, and I think we discussed this a little bit in the strategic planning process. It's such a great idea, but there's a lot of roadblocks with, in terms of addressing school curriculums, curricula, that are already in place, and they're highly regulated, and Chair Madden, you could probably speak to this.
And also, you have to, before you can go into a school, you have to pass all, you know, you have to pass all of the, whatever the things are that you have to fill out to do all that, and the problem is, it's hard, and there's not a lot of space these days for people to come in and do these things, although it seems like a great idea. And then the other problem you always have is people that are engaging enough and good enough, that also have the desire to want to go in and still do that, because it's very hard to, you know, you'd have to really do a really good, I mean, it's totally doable, but it's just a hard thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, I know the concern is how to engage young, young people.
And it's in every plan, it's in every strategic thing, and a policy, and all this stuff, and the 2040 plan and all of it, you know, get the youth involved, and it's just one of those things that should be discussed when we have a conference or a time together, because that's a big discussion issue.
How about the alternative of bringing the kids here, or wherever here is? Like they do sometimes, or at least they used to, bring them to the museum for a field trip or something? Is that, is difficult?
The, the problem with that is the cost of a school bus to bring someone in is probably, and to do the permission for the field trip and to get all that work, of course, it can be done, but if we're going to pay for a school bus, they're probably three hundred dollars a busload.
It's five thou, it's a thousand dollar minimum, the budget for a school outing.
Okay, see, I knew that she would know. You can tell I've been retired for six years.
Yes, you have, girl.
Inflation.
But it doesn't, it doesn't mean that, do things like targeting, you, like the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the homeschoolers, the, you know, nothing says that we have to go in and confide with STEMS or Stream or ODE, you know, in the classroom.
I do know that when we did the project with the Redmond, oh, with the Tetherswell House, with the, and we had the, I ran the country store, and we had the penny candy, and we did a lot of education there, because there were a lot of kids, we had the dress-up stuff, and there were dolls and soap carving and all of that. So that, that, for me, is the best way, you know, you say the word penny candy, and you'll get a million kids there. So I'm hoping we can do something like that during Historic Preservation Month, because that's as close as I've been able to get to, you know, teaching kids.
And the reason why that's successful is because it was coordinated by Redmond Area Parks and Rec, who, that's all they, that's all they do is organize events like that.
Right. And I don't know if Margaret Maffey is still the coordinator there, but.
I believe she is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I was going to mention something quasi-related to this on engaging youth. If you, if you're not familiar with it, and there's an Architects in Schools program, it's run by a foundation, and it's just for Oregon. I was a volunteer for that program for several years in a row, and there's a lot of heavy coordination with that foundation and each of the school districts, and it's a pretty successful program. And most of the classes that, that I was a volunteer, and it was third, fourth, and fifth graders, and I was able to sneak in wherever I could. Historic preservation, or, you know, we'd have a, just a thirty-minute class on the history of Central Oregon, and, you know, we do like a little mini quiz of different types of structures and stuff like that, fun things for the, for the kids. And so there, it's, so it's not to say that I think that this type of program is untouchable, it's just that, in some areas, they are doing this, and it's through organizations that have already, who have been coordinating with the school districts for decades sometimes.
I do know that Powell Butte School has a thing when they bring their fourth graders who are doing the Oregon Trail, and they've had me come out, you know, win the outfit and teach games and stuff. So I do know that Powell Butte has that built into the curriculum, and they have great costumes, if you ever need pioneer costumes out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this one's a little tricky, so I think.
Yeah.
There's opportunities, and maybe those will shake out as we keep discussing this and think about maybe specifically Preservation Month and, you know, biting off little pieces of it in ways. I like that idea of kind of going under the wings of an existing program that kind of already has made.
Oh, and the library was, helped us too.
Oh, yeah.
The Deschutes County Library had a big table there.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I will move on, and we can, again, circle back to any of this as needed. So another, just notes, one of the suggestions was to review lists of historic properties to see that they're in order and create a newly eligible properties list. SHPO's response was, related to this would be doing some historic context around undertold stories of the county, and then look for properties that relate to them. New designations are always great, but you need to do the educational groundwork to make it positive, which I thought was an interesting response. And then incentive, this is another suggestion, incentives for those who follow guidelines. SHPO would just want more information about what.
And what I, that's from me, and what I did is I looked at the strategic plan, and I kind of wrote down the strategic plan things and tried to match, and that was one of the things on the strategic plan. I don't know what incentives would look like, but that's.
Yeah, no, I think that's.
Something that's in the plan.
It's a good start.
I just think it's something, we should do something with property owners at some point, because I feel like we're remiss in connecting with them, like there's almost an adversary relationship between us and the property owners, and I'd like to, you know, build that bridge.
Yeah, I think sometimes people are scared.
Right.
Like, oh, they're going to make me read.
Do my windows, that's what you always hear.
So I think that's a good point. Okay. Just a few little things, stuff that we've kind of already done, review current codes and make changes as needed. We just did a lot of this with the codes, I think, several years ago, updated the Historic Preservation Code to reflect the state language. Improving public access to historic records. They said this is eligible, but don't we already have a lot of these online? We do, we have our story map, and we have our Goal Five resources, that's kind of the limit of what we have.
There is a limited amount of information on Deschutes County Dial. Occasionally, I mean, it'll indicate whether, when it's a, when it's a historic resource.
Yeah.
But that's more related to tax deferments than anything else. But I think there would be a great opportunity to, to use Dial to its fullest potential for that kind of thing as well.
Specifically, like, what would you like to see on Dial? I'm just curious. What would be helpful?
Well, for, for a lot of properties, they'll have, you know, they'll have access to site plans, sometimes limited information on building, you know, floor plans, things like that, but I'm wondering if there's a way to connect, and maybe it's something like that, where you're connecting the story map to, to those tax lots or something.
Yeah, that's an interesting discussion. I mean, I think, you know, Dial is very highly regimented, because it's, you know, it's meant for kind of, like you said, taxation and development and things like that, but maybe there's a way that our story map could link to Dial at least, so you could say, you know, learn kind of the narrative about the property, and then say, if you want the actual, you know, tax lot number and all the nitty-gritty, go this way. So it's kind of that direction, rather than from Dial, because I don't know how easy it is to put additional things on Dial that are not kind of record-based, you know? Does that make sense?
Well, I think, now that I'm thinking about it, there, I think I've seen national nomination forms on some of.
Yes.
Some properties, but not all of them.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've, we kind of went down this road when we were looking at probably the Peterson Rock Garden of what records are stored in Dial, and it was, it was a bit of a Wild West, I think, and Peter might be able to speak to this, of what documents existed, and I think, it's my understanding, that everything that we have has been scanned and uploaded. Every once in a while, something kind of comes out of the woodwork, but I think, yeah, some have really complete records about, you know, why this was designated, what's significant, and some are kind of a big gray area, and I don't know where those documents live, to be honest. But that's, yeah, that's a concern. Okay. But, yeah, a better connection with Dial and the actual records is a good idea. All right, on to slightly more positive things, fundable projects. There was a suggestion for an audio tour of rural properties if there's areas that haven't been addressed. They said it could link nicely with our story maps. It's a great way to serve the whole county and could also include some archaeology that way, so something to think about. I assume that would involve hiring a consultant in some way to do that. Workshops and training for commissioners, this is always one that comes up. Specifically, they mentioned the National Alliance of Preservation Commission conferences. I know they have a big conference every year or two that's in a place, I'm not sure if we'd be able to do that, but they definitely have kind of webinars, and you can do individually tailored trainings for specific things that could be helpful. I don't know if people have thoughts about that. And then lastly, the mailers to the property owners, and I think this is, this is something that apparently many CLGs do this often, and speaks to what Chair Madden was talking about, about outreach and kind of connecting everybody. Even if it's as simple as a postcard or something, just saying, hey, we know you have a historic property, we can be a resource, something like that, it's a fairly simple gesture, but just making sure that, A, they're not scared of us, and B, just knowing that we were aware that this is historic property, and this is a thing, and we could obviously finesse what, what we do or don't want to say, but I think that's a pretty simple and effective task to address.
That is one item that has been done in the past. I don't remember, I don't recall which years it may have been, we may have done mailers the first year that Story Map came out. I don't know, Peter might remember a little bit about that.
I don't remember, this is Chair Madden, I don't remember that.
Do you think it would be valuable to do it again, or do you think that would be redundant?
To send mailers?
To send another mailer.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a great idea. What do you, what do you think, everyone? It could just be, hey, you're a property owner, we're thinking about you, and I'll be glad to fill them in by hand.
You can't, because you got to send them out vote class, probably.
If I could ask a point of clarification, just because I haven't been around long enough, but in order to be designated as one of these historic sites that are on our map, there's some procedure, right? Somebody's got to fill out an application. The property owner, oh, sorry, the property owner has to be involved in that process, right?
Yeah, although it's possible that the, if it happened a long time ago, it could have changed hands.
Oh.
So sometimes people, I think people, you know, if they have a good Realtor, they should know that they're buying a historic property, but I think sometimes people might not know, or it was so long ago, or they didn't care at the time, and, you know, but yes, there is an initial process, for sure.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director, to the most recent question, it to, going forward to establish a historic designation, it requires owner consent. Few decades ago, a local government, based on substantial evidence, could recommend a property be historic, and there were a few occasions, I think it occurred here, but in the state, where it was seen as local government ignoring the will of the property owners and designating a property against their will, so that has changed. One of the things that, and Commissioner Stemich's question kind of was thought-provoking for me is, several years ago, and I think it's the last time that we really engaged our landmark property owners, is when we did the Story Map. We had the volunteer.
It took the photos.
Yeah, we had the volunteer amateur photographers, and we reached out and let them know of this opportunity, the photographers could take shots from the public right away if they were given access, and while we, we, you know, I guess I underscore how important, that was such an extraordinary opportunity to genuine, to generate engagement and educate the resident, the property owners, to the extent property changed hand, that they had a historic structure. So I don't know, you know, mailing is, might be effective. So I don't know, you know, mailing is, might be effective. I don't know if there's, you know, we didn't, I don't know if we had, I, we may have had, you know, smartphones now which take a photograph as well as any amateur photographer. But there may be concepts that, you know, you could think about for several weeks. You know, how to make that mailing more enticing, you know? Do you have new photographs that you would like to share with us that we could upload onto our Story Map C-Link? That, you know, you know, show the property, you know?
Do they ever do digital calendars? Do people ever do that, like paper calendars, you know? Because the word calendar has floated around for many years and it's like, oh, wouldn't that be fun?
Yeah, and so that could be something that we could, you know, maybe it's a, again, we should touch base with Curry. But, you know, if you, maybe it's a way of, you know, you know, Deschutes County has resources or interested in making a calendar, if you have images. I don't know, I don't have the answer, but I thought I would just use in response to Commissioner Stemich's question, how to make that mailing, to the extent you want to engage those property owners to ensure that they're still, you know, that they're still actively involved and they have perspectives or have questions. How to, how to embolden them to engage this commission. And many of you will remember how productive that Story Map was. It was, we had, we had the photographers here, we recognized them. And I even think property owners were invited and it was, it's been a few years, but it was such a success and it was a catalyst that I think the City of Ben followed and certainly last year's success with the City of Sisters Story Map. So something to think about and chew on. But I couldn't resist just coming up and, I don't know, trying to stoke the creative energy around empowering those property owners. Because what they have is really special and
Right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I like the idea of, do you have a better photo now? Did you get a camera for Christmas? I mean, do you want to, you know, just, do you want to
We want, yeah, we want to celebrate, we want to celebrate it.
It's possible that we could be coming up on the 10, 10 years since that was initially done.
Oh, wow, was it that long? I mean, another thought is refreshing the Story Map itself. I don't know if that's necessary.
I was just wondering what year that Story Map was. Is that, Matt Martin did that, right?
We had Zachary, remember Zachary?
Oh, Zach? Okay, and he did that right before Matt left.
Yeah, that was one of Zachary's first projects as an intern, I think, or something like that.
Yep.
I want to say it was like 2015.
Okay.
It feels like 20, we can confirm, but 2015, 2016, maybe 20 So you're not wrong if you, if you round up, it's getting close to 10.
Well, and if you did something like that, then that would be a really nice way to engage. Because I have on my list right here, we don't engage North, South and East County very much. And, you know, I don't know if that would be a good time to reach out to brothers or, I don't know, just that's another thing to put out there.
Refreshing the
Refreshing the Story Map and it's like, oh, because we love you outliers or whatever. We'll come see you in the east. We'll fill up our gas tank and go see Dan on the east side.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. All right, moving on.
Do we know how many properties that would be? I mean, is that like a 200, 300? I'm sorry, I
You know?
I can't remember either.
I don't, I'd have to pull up our comp plan.
Are those the ones that would be on our interactive map?
It'd be on the map and in our, actually, it's in our Strategic Plan and in our rules.
Okay.
I just looked through those the other day. I don't think there were 200.
Yeah, I feel like maybe in the 100, and I could look it up, I just have
More like 100. It was like 12 in one category, 19 in another for buildings and sites. More like 100, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I can follow up on that certainly when I'm no longer sharing my screen. Yeah, but that could be doable. I mean, it was pretty, I thought it was pretty inspirational to see what Sisters did with their Story Map. And it wasn't just saying, okay, here are the properties, but they sliced and diced the categories and I thought it made it really engaging. So that could be worth revisiting perhaps. Okay. Moving on to additional fundable projects.
So these are the ones that are possible.
These are the ones that are possible. We're on the, we're on the high note now. These are just general, they just gave general yeses to and not really any additional information, but highlight in preserving sites that are not buildings, wagon roads, tree blazes.
That's very exciting.
Yeah, I mean, the question is how, how does one do that? But I think that's great.
I think you'd have to work with the, what's the county surveyor guy? Is that who? That's the one that, I can't think of his name now, but he was the one that introduced me to the line of tree blazes and where they were and how they were marked. Yes, that's who I'm talking about. Is Mike Berry still the?
He's retired.
No, he's retired, but I know where he lives.
But he would be a very good person to help with that. And then there's, used to be this guy at the museum, I can't think of his name, but he was really nice too.
Oh, that was a school teacher?
Yeah, he was kind of a tall, lanky drink of water. And he was always around and had a dog and was driving around looking for projectile points and stuff. Anyway, that is, that would be a very, I would be glad to help with that if we ever do that.
And perhaps Ward Tonsfeld?
Yes, and Ward Tonsfeld too. He was related to the Obie Riley's.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 he was the one that, yeah, okay, yeah, that's right. Thank you, Rachel.
I mean, that could be a thing that, you know, it might not rise to the level of suddenly becoming a Goal Five resource, because that's a whole
Right.
thing, but just acknowledging it, even if we, if there was a page on the website saying, hey, there's these things, you, they exist here and they're interesting because this.
But it's the same problem that you would have with an archaeological site. Because out on Snow Creek Road where the Fremont blazes, out by where I'm from, it's like, I know that there would be people that would want to cut it down and take it. And so that's part of it too. Or where the old camps were out there in the woods.
That's something to think about. How, what's the best way to kind of celebrate these things without I mean, I guess that's the eternal, the eternal thing, but especially when it's things like tree blazes. How could we turn that into a project that would be helpful? Let's sit on that. Workshops for interested parties, that's kind of a evergreen thing that is discussed. We don't know necessarily what those would be, but that's always an option. And the general kind of education, that is a thing, you know, that was a lot of our grant last year. Collaborating with the public through articles, if someone wants to write something, exhibits, Preservation Month, it's kind of a catch-all for a lot of what the HLC does. Especially because this HLC isn't usually designating things very often or, you know, reviewing things. So I think education is really, as expressed in the Strategic Plan, important. The idea of a newsletter might be interesting. I don't know if people have thoughts on those, or we just want to let them sit for now. It's a lot of information I'm throwing at you.
I think we should hold off on a newsletter because we're having trouble with the minutes, so let's just put the newsletter off for a while.
I was just thinking that. Honestly, if you just focus on, on making a really accessible website, I, that would probably hit a lot of, a lot of points.
Yeah, I think that's actually really, our HLC website is a little old and tired.
Right.
And I say that as the person who maintains it. But I think that, you know, our, our team on the county staff, they're really great at thinking of new ways to kind of present websites. They're doing a great job with a comprehensive plan, so maybe that's something that would be a good
Right.
staff time thing, kind of update, refresh the website. It's pretty bare bones right now. Okay, this is another good idea.
That's a great idea.
All right, moving on. I'm trying to be mindful of everyone's time. Sisters, as you saw in the memo, suggested a bunch of things. They were all pretty succinct and pretty fundable. Begin a National Historic Register nomination for buildings that were recommended for nomination in the RLS. Do an intensive level survey on the Sisters Hotel and Sisters Library, a thematic study of forest service. George Carroll, I'm not familiar with George Carroll, but, and touch up the Story
He was the architect for a lot of those buildings.
Oh, right, 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 sorry, that was my
What does MF, MPDF stand for?
I don't know.
Multiple Property Document.
Was that Commissioner Horton-Jones? She always knows.
A Multiple Property Document is what you create so that you have a protocols for the types of buildings that would fit into a nomination to the National Register based on themes or architectural style or things like that.
So it's the official category name of what a thematic study is, basically. Right? It's just sort of what the, how it gets funneled through the system, the National Register system. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so then if you have another building that comes up that fits into that MPD, you don't have to go start from scratch. You can
Okay.
refer to that MPD and then your nomination can go forward much quicker.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton-Jones. I didn't know that. Now, you don't use the F after the MPDF and I was wondering why not?
I don't know what the F stands for.
We could all think of some words. Thank you very much.
So, yeah, those are some ideas from Sisters. You know, last year, as I noted, we were pretty heavy on Sisters projects. So it's up to the commission to decide, you know, how much they want to do Sisters projects versus county projects. And that might shake out into, when, when we look at kind of dollar amounts and things like that. But just something to start spinning in your heads, you know, they have a lot of options.
Do you know how much money they got last cycle?
Well, they
Or how, what percentage of the pile they got?
About, I would say, most of what the actual direct costs were, so 10 or 11,000.
Okay.
Or maybe it ended up being a little bit less because it came a little bit under, so we compensated, but
Okay.
maybe a little less than 10,000.
Well, that's good, because there's only, if this year, there's only approximately 14,000.
Right, right.
Maybe we should spread it out to other folks.
Yeah, I mean, certain, some of the tasks we've talked about would be staff time, so that would be
Right.
part of the match. So that's kind of my job to figure that out and then figure out how all those puzzle pieces fit together. So I think for now, just whatever the commission is interested in, we should just go for, and then we can kind of whittle it down
Okay.
once it comes to the cost. But, yeah, the balance of Sisters to the county is important. Emphatic yeses from Shipau. This is my favorite category. I got yeses with exclamation marks. And I had to Google how to spell yeses.
Is it ES?
It's double S, ES. Yeah, I know. So wildfire, and this was a really interesting thing that Sisters brought up and someone, I forget which commissioner here, brought up. A wildfire protection plan for historic properties or a sort of simpler, more narrow option, which came from Sisters, is to hire a historic preservation consultant to come up with an acceptable building materials list that's fire resistant yet historically sensitive. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that have to take into consideration the state and potentially the county's designation of building materials as part of the building codes?
Yeah, yeah, so it could be difficult. There's no doubt. You know, it might be biting off more than we could chew. They just, at the state, seem very excited about it. But it, it's possible that just saying, okay, from, from our building code that exists right now, you know, what's a subset of this that would be applicable to historic properties or some permutation of that? I, I think we'd all have to think about this a little bit more to figure out what's actually practical, but that link of wildfire is interesting, and just fire in general.
There might be more resources out there that have already been done for this if we just, if it was to kind of be Googled a little bit. I mean, we, as an architecture firm, we have resources already for sustainable building products. You know, lots of databases. I can't imagine that there's not already something somewhere that has to do with fire resistant materials that would suit the list that's in the code as well. And even if there's not, or if we come up and de-handed on that, I think that might be something that we could do, like a call for volunteers.
What was that word you just used? De-
Call for volunteers?
No, de-handed? No. I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Never mind. Keep going.
I'm not sure which word I was using. If, if we wanted to pull together our own database or something like that, I don't, I mean, I know you wouldn't tie it back to the code directly, but like as if it was just some recommendation. I'm, I'm wondering if we could just do a call out to volunteers who have some sort of architectural background and see, see if this might be something. Because, I mean, if I had the time, I'd do it, honestly. I, I think it would actually be pretty interesting. But that's what happens when you're an architecture geek.
Yeah, I think this would need to be more flushed out and, yeah, the research would have to be done. I was surprised that, you know, Shipau was very excited about this and they said this would, this would help the whole state. So that led me to believe that no one in the state is kind of intersecting these two things, which is surprising. Considering how much there's wildfire discussion just in general and fire discussion, but that just might need more research.
That's very intriguing.
Yeah. So they were really into that. And they were into the work on a plan to designate, monitor, or just even discuss archaeological sites. And they said you could invite the City of Salem, for instance, to talk about their archaeology program. You know, as a special meeting, they could do a presentation. They also said you could also connect with a Chinese diaspora project to touch on both archaeology and Chinese history, which I thought, you know, it's a little bit out there, but maybe, right? Just that, that archaeology link, they were very supportive of that, whatever form that might take. I don't know if anyone has thoughts on that or just
Well, I'm in the Archaeological Society of Central Oregon. We had a meeting last week and I think they're planning on bringing one of the archaeologists from Southern Oregon University to come up and talk about the Chinese diaspora. So there may be an opportunity sooner rather than later, if you want to attend or more information forthcoming.
Okay, well, thank you. That's very interesting.
But our work on designating, monitoring and discussing archaeological sites, isn't that an overlap with the Central Oregon archaeological, whatever, sorry, name?
Society.
Society.
Yeah. Because, because we had Paul, and I forgot her name, come here a couple of weeks ago.
And that's what they do.
Yeah, and they, and they explained that that's exactly what they do.
So maybe
Well, I've never heard of anyone complaining that there were too many people with their fingers in the pie when it came to historic preservation.
Unless, unless they're battling against each other, that was my point.
Are you suggesting we have a battle with the Archaeology Society?
No, I think we should
No, but you could certainly I mean, you know, two organizations working towards a common goal. They have a site steward program. Maybe that would be worth having someone come and talk about that one night.
That's the Central Oregon Society? Yeah?
Yes, Central Oregon Archaeologists.
The ones that came to talk to us that night, yeah, that the, that the equipment wasn't working.
Yes.
Oh, right.
So we had that discussion already.
Well, I didn't hear it.
I know, I'm sad that you didn't because it would have been much more interesting had you had been there.
So maybe just thoughts of kind of engaging professionals who deal with archaeology, whether it's the Central Oregon Society or the City of Salem or what have you, to maybe just have presentations.
Well, even the federal or state agencies.
Yeah.
You know, we're understaffed as it is, so any help we can get is more than welcome.
Yeah, and if something like that is virtual, certainly everyone can participate from everywhere, so that's something to think about. All right. So with that, based on this first pass from, from Shipau, I took the liberty of just doing a very quick shortlets that is just from the staff perspective, based on kind of what's doable and what those emphatic yeses were. And this is completely up for discussion, but just in the exercise of narrowing things down. Just thoughts. Wildfire stuff, that would be consultant-driven, whatever shape that might take. Mailers, these are things, again, that are just rising to the top in staff's brain, which I realize is, is different. Mailers, these are things, again, that are just rising to the top in staff's brain, which I realize is, is different. General commissioner training, whether that's the National Alliance of Preservation Commission or something else. If people have ideas, if they say, if you know of a specific event that you want to, I assume it's probably virtual, or maybe it's regional, something like that, specifics would be super helpful if that's a thing that the commissioners would like to pursue. The archaeological sites, as we were just discussing, that kind of for, for staff rose to the top. And general education things, which is kind of always the catch-all for lots of things, including Preservation Month. Um, and I can give you all a copy of this, this presentation, if that's helpful, to help kind of distill things, because I know it's a lot. Those were just, that was just a first pass of things that could probably be doable, and of course, there's always a little bit of, um, give and take in terms of the, the money involved and what's, you know, how things fit into different buckets. So I present those as just some initial thoughts for the commission. Oh, and then Sisters, excuse me. I don't want to forget Sisters, but, you know, out of all of their things, maybe choose one. I don't know. And that could be either their choice or the commission's choice. These things would be consultant-driven, uh, and that would be just up for discussion. And depends, of course, as, as we've discussed, on kind of how much, how much of the balance we want to go to Sisters versus other stuff.
I do have a question for Commissioner Lecky. Sharon, when you wrote on here that you wanted to do something for cemeteries, I think I highlighted that. And I just wondered, is that just from the, the Chippewa site with all the stuff that is on there, the grants for pioneer cemeteries and things?
Well, I just thought, you know, I was looking for catchy things that people don't know about.
Right.
Meaning that there's no community.
I do know that those tours I led in the cemetery were always the most popular.
I know, and they're engaging and they're interesting.
And there is money and funding for them, and I remember when the dowser was there from the, the state historic cemetery place. I, I mean, the, the state's cemetery committee. And that was really interesting. I thought, wouldn't it be fun to get that dowser back here and show us where all the bones are?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The challenge is the balance. You know, we don't want to create awareness on things that have the potential, you know, to, to, you know, be vandalized or whatever.
Exactly. It's the same problem with blazes and archaeology and all of that.
I know. It's, it's a really rough, uh, decision.
Maybe something about cemeteries could fall into the kind of educational, you know, and maybe we don't define that quite yet, but whether that's.
So Tanya, do you, do you think at this point, everybody should come up with their top ten and mail it to you?
I would say maybe not top ten, maybe a little bit fewer than that.
Okay.
Just because there's, these are a lot of big projects.
Right.
So the general idea is that, you know, we want to kind of whittle this, this down, and of course, there are always alternates and that ebbs and flows a little bit. Once that list is verified, um, you know, staff can do, do more research and kind of start looking at money, and that's, that is where it starts to get a little bit tricky. Um, and we could present that slightly refined list to the next, uh, at the next meeting on February sixth with the goal of kind of locking it down as much as is reasonable by then, because then, um, we need to present to the Board of County Commissioners before we actually apply for the grant. So we want to be able to say.
So our meeting is February sixth, and then the grant is due on the twentieth?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
We have time.
And then when do you meet with the commissioners?
That would have to happen in between those.
Okay.
Prior to us, you know, I think last time it was honestly like four days before we submitted, and they're generally okay with most of the things that the HLC suggests. But it is a step in the process.
Come up with priorities very shortly.
Yes. Yeah, um, if they're not, you know, sometime between now, kind of the first step of narrowing, between now and February sixth, so we can have a meaningful discussion about how to really narrow it down. And then there's always a little bit of wiggle room right.
So I, I should, we should put it out there that all the commissioners needs, need to write down their top picks and send them to Tanya, and make sure that they're done by the very first part of February, because our meeting is the sixth. Or do you want to say have them done by the fifth? Or the fourth, or the third, or?
It needs time to put some budget numbers by those priorities.
Yeah, and that's the next one, because we don't know how much any of it will cost.
I think, I, I personally would not even, uh, make a recommend, you know, as a volunteer, I want to see a budget line item, you know, that's just an estimate aligned with whatever that work plan is.
That's reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I just think it's helpful to everyone.
Yeah, absolutely.
But Tanya needs more time, and so we need to get our response to Tanya, like, by the, I don't know, January twentieth or twenty-seventh or something. Give her some time to get that work done.
All right.
I, I was just, Madam Chair, if I may. I was, I, I was thinking they're offering comments kind of aligned with Commissioner Lecky. I think, um, if we can lean on you respectfully to get your comments, say, by the twentieth, it gives Tanya a, a solid week to sift through those, prepare a meaningful packet for your subsequent meeting on February sixth. As she noted in her memorandum, but ultimately, we have to go to the Board of County Commissioners. It's, it's really a formality, but any grant that we apply for requires a concurrence. It's, it's also an opportunity to educate them on, on the work that you've done and the, um, the kind of your priorities and focus going forward for the next CLG grant cycle. So the more specificity you can apply, your, your, even, you know, if you had a back-of-the-napkin allocation of resources, again, we get a fifty percent match of in-kind, that would be really helpful. And then on the sixth, I think we would be coming to have you kind of put them in tiers. Again, CLG funding, as you know, is, to the extent that it's eligible, can get moved around if we find.
Yeah.
Oh, this one project is, is opportune, we can jump on it. Conversely, if it's problematic, we can quickly audible, knowing that it's identified. So I guess as director, to give support to Tanya, just a gentle lean on, on the commission, respectfully to, to maybe look at the next two weeks to have you guys prioritize accordingly.
So those lists, your top picks are due to Tanya, um, by January twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Is that going to be based on your suggested shortlist?
It's based on whatever you would like. I was just putting out one version of a shortlist. If you hate all of those and want to do other things, please tell me, because I was just, just trying to get something, some sort of structure there, if, yeah.
It would be helpful to me, though, is if I had access to this PowerPoint.
Yes, I'm going to send it. I'll send it first thing in the morning.
Perfect.
Yeah. And I recognize that that, you know, the comments didn't address every single, uh, project, but these were the ones that sort of rose to the level of, uh, Chippewa's attention.
Yeah. Tanya, would it be helpful if the commissioners, if they have an idea for, uh, a consultant or a volunteer that could help with whatever that particular task was that we're recommending, that we also provide that to you?
That would be extremely helpful.
That's what I thought, because of the diversity of our work.
You all, you are all the experts, and you know the, the people for sure. That would be instrumental. Thank you. Yeah, any thoughts you have, basically, whether it's people, money, thumbs up, thumbs down, I'll take it all. Please.
Thank you for doing that.
So just to reiterate, please send me your thoughts, priorities, things you hate, potential, potential costs, potential consultants, all of it, by the end of the day on Friday, the twentieth. And then I'll turn those around as best I can, try to associate some dollar amounts with them, and try to kind of organize them in time for the packet to be out. I will create that packet on Monday, the thirtieth of January, which is a week prior to the next meeting.
Which is Monday, February sixth at five thirty P.M.
Correct. And I'll just note, kind of off to the side, is we will have our regularly scheduled updates from the other commissions. I know we didn't do that this, this meeting, because it was a special meeting.
Questions.
Or just doing it the regularly scheduled. I didn't forget.
Thank you. Is there anything else, or should we move on? Everyone's been really patient. This is a long meeting tonight. I think we're on the, the last thing, which is the commission and staff comments. And what I would like to do right now is just give you a quick little update on Historic Preservation Month for twenty twenty-three. Tanya and Kelly Cannon-Miller and myself will be meeting, I believe, and I don't know if Tanya will be there. She doesn't have to be there. I can go, but I'd love her to be there. And anyone else that wants to come. It's going to be the week of January twenty-third through twenty-seventh. Kelly has been very, very busy, and it's just been hard to connect, so we're, you're just, we're just moving on. And we hope to begin, to start work on projects, to meet with stakeholders and all that by the beginning of February. And if you're interested in helping, um, let me know. I know that for years, Rachel and I did a lot, and I don't know, you know, who wants to do what, but that will come later when I start begging you to help, so. But this year, I haven't done as much, you know, we haven't had it in a couple of years, and I haven't done as much as I, I, um, wanted to. And so I'm really hoping that this year we can do something good. So that's the update on that. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Kelly, you can put me on your, your mailing list.
Okay. I won't make you like, yeah, we won't do anything like we used to.
Yeah.
We used to give our heart and soul for the whole month. Now we'll just give my heart. Okay, is there anything else? Anybody has anything they'd like to say? Commission, um, comments or staff, or I want to thank Nicole and Peter and Tanya and Avery for being here tonight and helping us. And for, um, all of you in doing such a good job, um, on a long meeting. And with that, I'll adjourn it. Okay, meeting's over.